Silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indelible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Breanna.
Grantfus.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Weeblehouse.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
File.
Here.
With that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Your Honor, I'd ask that item 11 be removed from the consent agenda and just put on the regular. I think is an important enough move.
Okay.
I will make that motion with number 11 added on to the regular agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second with the addition of number 11 to the regular agenda. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
But then look for a motion to accept the amended full agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that takes us to our regular agendas, beginning with item number 11. Entertain a motion to consider resolution number 2019-53 approving the mayor's appointment of Brianna Durst as city clerk for the remainder of the mayor's four-year term pursuant to section 16-309 of the Nebraska Revised Statutes.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of resolution 2019-53.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. And as many of you know, the appointment of Brianna was made in the wake of news that our existing city clerk Beth Deck would be retiring. And in the last few months, Beth has been working with Brianna and training her on the job. Brianna was working with the city, with the planning department, and has been with the city for four years?
Almost three.
Three years. And we're excited for her to take the next step and join our team as city clerk. And we're fully confident that she will do an exceptional job for us. So, any questions or comments, council?
No questions, Your Honor. It's the only reason I thought it was an important enough move to be able to welcome her to this position that way, that it shouldn't fall in the cracks of consent that way. And I meant to actually get it out on the preliminary agenda and missed, got busy that one day, so. But welcome.
I'm glad you did. Thanks, Councilman. All right. Welcome aboard, Brianna.
Thank you.
Contingent on this next vote?
Yeah.
Lot of pressure. Lot of pressure, Your Honor. Any other comments or discussion, council? Okay, if none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2019-53 is adopted.
Now officially. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the public hearings and related action portion of the agenda. Item number 24. I will open this public hearing to consider amending the East Omaha Avenue redevelopment area to add 2.27 acres. And to kick off discussion and D., Jan Merrill. Our Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District Representative, Jan Merrill. Good evening.
Okay, on September 26, 2019, the city council met with the council approving a resolution number 2019-49 submitting to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation that the blight and substandard study of the East Omaha redevelopment area would be amended on September 10, 2019. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and the amended blight study was voted seven to zero, recommending that we declare the amended East Omaha Avenue redevelopment area blighted and substandard. This study was done, was blighted back in August 21 of 2017. The Gainville Custom Homes has applied, want to apply for TIF financing. And to do this, they want to develop 13 lots immediately north of the North Park Development. The original East Omaha Avenue redevelopment area declared blighted and substandard on August 21, 2017, only goes north of the quarter line of section 26. The housing development that the Gainesville Valley Custom Homes extends north of that quarter line. So, a portion of eight of the lots bordering East Bluff Avenue is north of that quarter line. And so, they were not included in that substandard. The five lots that are on the northern portion that borders Ferguson Drive are all outside the area, currently declared to be blighted and substandard. So, in order for them to get TIF, the East Omaha redevelopment area needs to be extended to include those properties. The amended study concluded that adding the additional area, and it's approximately 2.27 acres, is needed to make the development of the portion of the original development area of East Bluff Avenue and west of Norfolk, of the Alcorn River economically feasible.
Okay. Thank you, Jan. Any questions for Jan? Looks like you're off the hook. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one. I'll ask for a Planning Commission report, Brianna.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a hearing on the amended blight and substandard determination study for the area referred to as the East Omaha Avenue Redevelopment Area on October 8, 2019. The Planning Commission recommends approval of declaration of the amended East Omaha Avenue redevelopment area as blighted and substandard with a seven to zero vote.
Okay, thank you, Brianna. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 25. And look for a motion to consider resolution number 2019-59 declaring the amended East Omaha Avenue redevelopment area blighted and substandard.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of resolution 2019-59.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on this, council? Questions? Comments? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2019-59 is adopted.
Item 26. I will open this public hearing at the request of Faith Regional Health Services to consider a zoning change from C-2A Special Business District to C-3 Service Commercial District on property generally located on the southwest corner of West Norfolk Avenue and 27th Street. And to open up the discussion, Val, please some background.
Thank you. This area is the piece of property that Faith Regional owns, south of Norfolk Avenue, where the new South Medical Office Building is almost finished. And what came up here recently was signage, kind of like what we're running into on some of the other pieces of property along 275 that we've zoned change to C-3 recently. Being along that large highway and so far set back from the highway also requires larger signage. And C-2A just wasn't meant to have large businesses along 275 for that. So, C-3 would be the more appropriate zoning for something along those lines.
Okay. Thank you, Val. Val, do you know from the, from discussion, is this signage intended to be standalone signage or on the building itself, or both?
The signage that we were running into was more of the freestanding sign, kind of at the corner of 275 and where it connects up between 275 and Norfolk Avenue.
Okay, all right. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay. Hearing no one, Planning Commission report, please, Brianna.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 8, 2019, at the request of Faith Regional Health Services to consider a zoning change from C-2A Special Business District to C-3 Service Commercial District on property addressed as 2701 West Norfolk Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a six to zero vote.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 27. I'd ask for a motion to consider ordinance number 5638 approving a zoning change from C-2A to C-3 on property generally located on the southwest corner of West Norfolk Avenue and 27th Street.
Your Honor, I'll offer for consideration ordinance number 5638.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further questions or discussion on this, council? If not, short title, please, Brianna.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5638 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, as there was no opposition and this seems to be what we've been doing along through there, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5638 on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5638 carries on second and third.
Okay, that moves us to our regular agenda, item number 28. I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5636 annexing the right-of-way along the east side of Highway 35 located in the southwest quarter of section 25, township 24 North, range one west of the 6 p.m., Madison County, Nebraska. Ordinance number 5636 passed on first reading at the October 7, 2019 city council meeting.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5636 on second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. And Steve Ramus, Public Works Director, please background on this.
Mayor, council, this is a little bit of cleanup over on Highway 35. When Wisner West was annexed in in the past, that line was extended to the east side of Highway 35, more perpendicular to the north side of the property. When we annexed in, the dial properties then to the north side, that was annexed in at more of a perpendicular ninety-degree angle across to the east side of the highway right-of-way. The result of that left a small triangle of right-of-way on the east side of Highway 35 that traditionally would be annexed in once we own all the property on the opposing side. So, we're really just bringing in a small sliver of right-of-way. It's right where those hammerhead approaches are that take off to the east and west side, kind of on the north side of that Wisner West property. So, it's just, again, it's a small cleanup, just to kind of be more in standard, in compliance with our standard practice for annexation.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions, council?
So, we'll pick up any maintenance or anything in that area then, related to the highway there?
Nothing that we don't already do.
Okay.
You know, as we've picked up, picked up some of that other property in there, we're now taking care of that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion, council? If none, short title, please, Brianna.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to annex to said city a part of the southwest quarter of section 25, township 24 North, range one west of the 6 p.m., Madison County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and to provide that this ordinance shall be published in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members present, ordinance voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5636 carries on second reading.
Item number 29. I would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Gerard Tank and Steel Incorporated from Concordia, Kansas, for the construction of the Northeast Industrial Elevated Water Tank Alternate Bid, Section A, for an amount of $1,799,500.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Motion and second. And Steve, or John Cahill, background, please.
Mayor, council members, on October 10, we opened up bids for the Northeast Industrial Water Tank Project. We had six bidders on the project. Those were Gerard Tank and Steel, Caldwell Tank, CBNI Storage Tanks, Phoenix Fabricators, McGuire Iron and Landmark Structures. The low bid was for, for just bid section A, was Gerard Tank for $1,799,000. The low bid with bid section A, which was US Steel, was $1,799,500. There was, as part of that bid specification, some certain requirements to make sure that we had some, you know, an experienced bidder building that tank. And I'll just briefly run through those. We required a minimum of five years of experience for the contractor. Gerard has over 15 years of experience. We required that they had some experience in 500,000 to a million gallon tanks. Gerard has three tanks in that category, as well as 21 tanks in that pedestal sphere-type tank category. So, they certainly meet the category of the 500 to a million gallon. And we also required that they had at least five of the petasphere-style water tanks. And again, they have, over their 15 years of experience, 21 of those tanks. In addition to that, we also looked at the experience of their project manager, John Cash. John's been working in the industry since the 1980s. He has 13 tanks in the 500,000 gallon category and higher. John has worked for CBI, McGuire Iron, Phoenix Fabricators, Caldwell Tanks, Advanced Tanks, and currently working on this project, would be working with Gerard Tank. So, again, we think we've got a very experienced project manager on the project. And we believe that our review of the bid requirements, Gerard does meet those.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions, council? Steve, discussion? This is discussion period, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so.
Fill this out later. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Did everyone receive the letter? It's council member and mayor. Does everyone have a copy of that? We understand that Gerard Steel does build the petasphere-style tank typically in the smaller capacities. What was specified here was a 750,000 gallon tank. They have constructed two petasphere-style tanks at 500,000 gallons. And they are currently under construction in O'Neal, Nebraska, on a 750,000 gallon capacity tank, although that tank has yet to be completed. And we will wait to see how that reacts when they fill it with over 5 million gallons of water. That is above and beyond what their standard capacity tanks would be, which takes, I understand they have a project manager that will manage the project, but it takes a large engineering force to know how to design these tanks to hold that capacity of water in the overturning moment, in the P delta effect. So, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the city council and the mayor and then make sure the city understood the parameters of what they are voting on tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be, feel free to answer any.
Thank you. Any questions, council?
I don't think he said his name.
For?
Carter Spulstra.
Thank you.
Sales manager, Caldwell Tanks, sir.
Okay.
We did run this through Olson's as well, just to make sure that they were okay with awarding to Gerard. They are recommending the award to Gerard. Olson's will also be our construction manager firm on site for the project. And they did the design as well.
Any questions for Carter?
I guess not for you, Carter, but for Steve. So, who did the design on the tank then?
Olson.
Olson's?
Well, Olson, Olson put the project together. The manufacturer is required to do, do design of the tank as well. I mean, our, Olson's design is more citing the tank. The design, the structural component or structural design of the tank is the fabricator.
And at O'Neal, there was a bid form issue. CBNI was actually a low bidder on that project, but they had some unit price issues that took them from first to fourth. And CBNI is one of our main competitors in that, in that capacity and style of tank. Any questions?
So, my... You're with Caldwell Tanks then, right?
We are.
See, I'm just seeing your shirt there.
Yes.
So, your concerns are what you talked about earlier.
Our concerns are that this is a large capacity tank for the apparent low bidder on the project. Like I said, they are, they are attempting to construct one that was bid last year. I believe substantial completion was June or July this year and still not complete. I believe they're in the middle of painting the tank, if I'm correct. So, it has not been filled with water at this point.
So, you guys were roughly 150,000 more?
Correct.
So, what, I guess, you came all the way here. But you guys are located out of Kentucky, maybe you're not in Kentucky, maybe you're located...
I'm actually located in Irmondale, Iowa, about three and a half hours.
So, what qualifies you to be the better?
If you look at the letter, the second page of the letter, we've constructed 124 tanks of this capacity or larger compared to Gerard has two tanks at 500,000 gallons. We're one of the industry leaders. We build every style, every capacity of elevated water storage tank.
Okay.
Any other questions?
It's not, again, I don't mean sidestepping because I did see the letter and read the letter and it actually threw up some concerns to me because, especially with the design end of it right now, is actually that of Gerard Tank and Steel. And we believe that they're going to have a good product. I would hope that when, when it's filled with the, when it's filled, that it don't burst in O'Neal. But if it did, I mean, what's our fallback on it?
As we go through the design process, between Olson and us, there'll be submittals coming to us for review. So, we're certainly involved in that process. The, I don't want to say tanks are cookie cutter projects. But there is a component, you know, when you're building a half a million gallon tank, a 750,000 gallon tank, a million gallon tank, you're not really redesigning a tank every time. That, that tank design is fairly standard.
You actually aren't redesigning a tank every time, for the moment.
Right, I don't want to, I don't want to argue the engineering behind it with you. I understand the engineering. Thank you.
We just asked that you reconsider and maybe, you know, move the motion to a later date so you can research the right decision.
Okay, thank you, Carter. This is a fairly commonplace practice in which the city receives bids and Public Works Department reviews those, not only for costs, but the responsibility and capabilities of the bidders and proposers. Steve, would you like to comment further? You noted that Olson, the design consultant on this, feels comfortable with Gerard, has, I assume then, worked with Gerard on such projects? And talk any more about the vetting process that we undergo to consider such projects?
Olson's has contacted specifically four of the company, four municipalities that they are doing work for or have done, have done work for. In that vetting process, there were no, absolutely no flags raised to the contrary for Gerard in terms of the quality of the work, the level of experience in terms of the design team that was tasked with the project. I, you know, I am aware that there were some delays on the tank in O'Neal. Those delays were really not per se tank-related. They were more related to the site itself and getting the site ready to go. Again, you know, I'm very confident in Gerard's capabilities. I'm confident in our design team's capabilities. And if we see concerns during, during any of the submittal processes, that we would certainly work through those as the engineering team. You know, you never get there either if you're never, if you're never allowed the opportunity to get there from a project perspective. And so, I, you know, I'm comfortable with Gerard.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any other questions, council? Discussion?
I think I got a couple. Yeah, come on up then. Well, where does this fall in budget-wise, what we had, compared to where this came in at?
Between, I don't have the exact numbers, but we're below budget. Between this project, this one came in, I'm going to say 250,000 under, roughly.
Right. The other one, the booster station came in a little bit above, I believe about 150. So, overall, when you had the two projects together, we are below budget. Not by much, but I believe it's about right at 100,000. Just a couple things, Dennis Watts, Waters, your director, say. The one thing that I guess I wanted to add is, you know, Jamie Rock pointed about, you know, kind of, you know, qualifications and that. One thing is, you know, all welds on the tank are X-rated, so we know that those are good. So, that's, you know, kind of major structural part of it, it's going to be the welds. Those are all X-rated, every weld. So, I guess we feel comfortable with that. The other one, I guess, that makes me, gives me a lot of comfort is when we talk to the guy. His name is John Cash, who's got, been with him since about early 80s. He's worked on a lot of, I think they said it's about 15 different of these large style tanks. So, he's been in the business. So, yeah, I think when we, when we look it over, you know, everything, I think, I guess I feel very comfortable. Olson's has done a lot of these tanks as far as, you know, just building different tanks. They've been the design, you know, the design or the oversight construction on them. We did talk to the gentleman, Curtis, drawing a blank on his last name, from O'Neal today. He said he's been very satisfied with what they got there. They got to do the logo on it yet, so it's, again, as you know, he said it's not, it's not filled with water yet. As far as it is behind on, on the construction, that was due to the dirt work with all the flooding that happened, the dirt work is what held that up. So, you know, I don't, I guess I wouldn't hold that against the overall tank erector on it. So, I guess that's all, I guess, I would just say.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis, appreciate that insight.
Just like to, you know, this, this is a first for our city to have a pedestal tank. I mean, the one at 25th really doesn't fit that. So, as long as you guys are confident that we won't have to revisit it 10 years after it's up with all kinds of issues, you know, I'd be okay with that, too.
It's, you know, the major component is, is the shape and the welding. Like Dennis said, it's literally a hollow steel ball full of water with a floor in it and a column that goes up through the middle and a pipe that fills it and a little stirring mechanism in there that keeps things stirred up. It's really not a complicated system. And I really, I don't want you to think that we're building this complicated structure over there. The, the design tools and stuff that are out there today, I don't think anybody around here can think of a tower that's come down or burst that you're, that you're aware of. It's engineering process... or burst that you're, that you're aware of. It's, the engineering process behind there's pretty solid in terms of what they're going to be doing.
And it does sound like, Steve, there's a number of checks and balances that we undertake as an overseer of the, of the project.
Correct.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Sure. Since Fred brought it up, I just want to explain too, there's been talk in the town about why are we building a new tank. You know, we're looking at tearing the old one down, but just to clarify, so this is the one we're building, is it seven hundred and fifty, that is a two hundred thousand. They're also in different pressure zones. So just maybe that'll help get, you know, but there's a reason why we're not just doing it because the tank's old or anything like that. But since you brought it up, I just want to throw those, you know, that in also. Is there any need some talk?
Sure.
Is that, that's in regards to the, the fire lines that they're putting out there?
This will help supply all the water out there. Fire is a big one, that's, that's part of the reason for the, for the size also. Yeah, so just for this whole northeast industrial area, you know, that whole area out there. It'll supply fire protection along with the proposed water usage.
Thank you Dennis.
You have to do it from the podium, please.
I was just curious, what capacities of tanks did, did you look at for your, for the full references? You know what capacity of tanks they were?
I would have, I would have looked.
From Olson's?
Because I, to my knowledge, they haven't done very many large capacity, and I would say.
No, I think in this five hundred thousand gallon range, we're talking two, if I remember correctly, and the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, they go from the four hundred to three hundred thousand gallon.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely the majority of their tanks.
Any further questions or comments, counsel? If not, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Moving on to item number thirty, would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Rutledge Construction Incorporated from Tilden, Nebraska, for the construction of the northeast industrial booster station improvements bid section B for an amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion second, and again, Steve, some background on this, please.
Mayor and council, of the six bidders that bid on the water tank, only one, there was only one bidder that submitted a bid for the booster station pump, and that was, that was Rutledge Construction was providing that bid for that bid schedule. They did bid, the bid did come, come in over, over engineer's estimate, and I'll have Dennis come up and talk a little bit. We do have a bid, the bid came in at three hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I believe we were around two fifty on that, if I recall correctly, plus or, plus or minus some. After the bids came in, we did circle the wagons with Olson to talk about why we had that difference in bid. There was quite a bit of electrical work out at, out at the existing booster site in order to get everything wired in for the new booster pump system. And so it looked like Olson was a little bit shy, actually a lot shy on their estimate on the electrical side. This will actually replace four booster, four, four existing booster pumps that are much smaller, that are operating out right, operating out there right now. And Dennis, you want to come up and kind of fill in some of the details behind what that booster station's going to do for us?
Yeah, basically, we have a, right now at the booster station, and we have a packaged pump station, has a three hundred and twenty-five GPM, or excuse me, seventy GPM pumps on there. And those will be replaced, basically just due to the need of the water up there and the fire protection. We'll be installing another, this will actually be a two thousand GPM pump. We currently have another fifteen and then a four hundred, but this will be needed for the fire protection, some of that on there. As Steve said, basically, the electrical, there's a lot to do with the VFDs, where you got to match, we want to make sure they get matched at the factory with the motor, with the pump, things like that. So that's why it is a little more expensive, or like we said, the whole booster station, that did come in about a hundred or so under, so whatever that's worth.
So Dennis, that, that's going into pump station south of the regional center there then?
That is correct, yes.
There's room in that building?
That one?
Yeah, while I remember it, I was just going, there's room in the building for that? So, okay.
So that's, that's, it'll be used again to serve that whole area up there, the fire protection, everything along with that.
Okay. Thank you Dennis. Other questions?
Steve, what was the engineer's estimate?
I think it was a little bit north of two fifty, two sixty-five, two sixty-eight.
Okay.
Somewhere, somewhere right around there.
That's a swing and a miss.
It's a swing and a miss.
Yeah.
The hit is between the two, they're, they're under.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-one, would entertain a motion to consider approval of change order number one with JJK Construction LLC for the two thousand nineteen Norfolk Bridge Repairs Group C North First Street Bridge, resulting in a net increase of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion in second, and Steve, some background on this, please.
Mayor and council, this, this change order is very specific to the, the First Street repairs portion of this project. Fairly substantial overrun on, on the project, around sixty percent for that, for that structure. The, the changes there, when we go out, we go out through a process called a chain drag, and we drag a chain down the deck and find the laminated portions of the deck. And usually we'll follow that up with a little, with a deck, what we call a deck crawl with a hammer, and currently find those spaces a little bit more. Sometimes we're doing that under traffic, and it's a little bit difficult to, you know, identify the exact locations of these, the delamination in that deck. What happened here is, is I would say kind of a classic case, where once we got out there on the deck, and the deck's close to traffic, and we start hammering on that deck to clean it up and get all the bad concrete out, we find out that, that that delamination is much more extensive. We had two options on this one. We could proceed with a traditional, just hammer them out, full depth, partial, partial depth, and go back in there and do individual deck repairs, patches, and kind of end up with a, a deck full of cold joints from, from various patches. Or we could mill off the top two inches of deck completely, and then come in and do any, any additional parcel depth or in full depth deck spall repairs, and then do that two inch deck overlay. The difference, you can see there, the traditional method would be about a hundred and fourteen thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand to do the milling, and come back in with a, a full new two inch deck, about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. That difference in cost of about sixty thousand dollars is actually going to end up buying us between five and ten years on that deck. When, when we, before we went down the path of identifying, or as we were going down the path of identifying the structures to work on this year, our consultant did a, a full analysis of, of First Street, Norfolk Avenue, and Elm. Between those, we've got four point four million dollars worth of work to complete on those over the next six to seven years. That work is currently not in our, our one and six-year budget. And so as we look at this, I think this, this sixty thousand dollar investment in that deck, extending that, the life of that deck for another five to ten years beyond the original, just a five-year spall repair, enables us to do some, you know, look at our funding, establish a route forward to replace the Norfolk Avenue deck, replace the First Street deck, probably about ten years, fifteen years again. And then the Elm Avenue Bridge that we're doing some repair on right now, that's the other bridge that needs a full repair at one point nine million. So I think that although, you know, I don't like seeing change orders come in of this magnitude, or is it this kind of a percentage on a project, I think that the hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar repair versus the hundred and fourteen thousand is the right, the right method here for this, for this project.
It, it would seem to be, after your explanation, somewhat of a value, I suppose. My question would be, prior to, prior to letting the bids out, our consultant was who?
The consultant on this was JEO.
JEO, yeah, okay. So why is it the JEO missed it? It's, it would seem to me as though if they're going to look at a project of this scope, that they may want to go and take a hammer out there and knock that down a little bit and see what's going on, and as opposed to come back with a, with a change order of this magnitude.
Right. I, I, they did. They did go out there, they chained it, they, they hammered it. I'm sure, I'm sure they didn't close the bridge, it was done under traffic, and so that, that is just a little bit of a different dynamic. Probably in the future, I would say, you know, you know, we need to close, close the bridges, we're doing those. I'm not ecstatic about, again, the extent of the, the change order, or as, either from a dollar perspective or even from just a percentage of, of the original contract there. But the other thing that we looked at was, what's the potential on this on the other ones? Well, on Elm, we're basically doing this on Elm, we're going in there. It's, it's, we're not going to mill the deck, but it's a substantial deck, deck project. We're keeping our costs low enough on that one because we are identifying that one as one of the more immediate deck replacements that's needed. So we'd like to figure out how to get that in the budget here in the next five years on that project. So I think extending that and doing a deck overlay is a little bit too much on that project. The other project is Benjamin Avenue. Most of that is not deck related, most of that is related to the approaches, and those are full, full repairs on the approaches. So we don't really see any potential magnitude of change there either.
All right. Well, I, I would certainly agree, for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, you can, you can close the bridge for a while.
Yeah.
But I also would imagine at the end of the day, had they found out what they needed to find out, it really wouldn't have changed the pricing a whole lot.
That's, that's correct. You know, we, we had an excellent bid in this case. They were five hundred and eight thousand, I think, and the next, the next bidder was up almost a hundred thousand over that. So we did have a good bid here.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions, Steve? Comments? None, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number thirty-two. Close session to discuss potential litigation. Would look for a motion to enter into closed session for the protection of public interest in order to update elected officials on potential litigation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay. We will, council will now enter into closed session.